Good evening. We'll call the November 14th, 2023 City Council Meeting to order. Tracy, could we have a roll call, please?
Bermal, here.
Harrington?
Here.
Perfect.
Sittig?
Smith?
Here.
Wason?
Here.
Thank you. Good timing. Item three is approval of the agenda, and to my knowledge, there are no changes to what's in front of you. Could I have a motion for approval, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. Item four is our consent agenda. Number of things on there, but I don't, is there anything on there that you want to take out and discuss separately? Could I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda carries. Item five is public comment time. If there's anyone in the audience that has comments for council that are already not saved on the agenda for public comment, now is the time to let us know. I will open public comment, and going once, going twice, I will close public comment period. Item six is our engineer report. Joe Sayah.
Thank you. Couple of updates on construction projects from our design team. At City Hall, the paver installation, you've probably noticed, is almost finished in the front plaza area. They've got the topsoil there. They're starting to backfill the planting beds. They've got plantings and landscape rock in the west parking lot. Quite a few of those have been planted. And construction of the trash enclosure has started, which I'm sure is exciting for everybody. Within the building, the painting and ceiling grid work is nearing completion, and they've started on installing cabinets, shelves, countertops, and still working on flooring tile throughout the building. Pin Meadows Park, if you've been by there, you've noticed it kind of looks like nothing ever happened. The work is pretty much substantially complete for the fall. As I've mentioned before, there's some stuff to do in the spring, but the big thing is obviously that the grading is done, the site has been sodded, and again, it just looks like the park again, so.
How are they on timeline? Were they early? It sure looked early.
I think we're still good because it was November 24th was when they needed to be wrapped up, so. Which, I mean, they got done with the things they needed to do when the weather allowed them, so. Rancho Way Phase Five, this is an older project, but the plant and tree replacements from the one-year warranty inspection are being replaced this week. I know they started today. So in general, a lot of our projects have warranties on the plants, so they plan them, they have to be accepted. We let them go through a year, we check them, and then say, hey, you've got to replace, you know, whatever, these 50, 60 plants throughout the site, and then they order them, and then they're coming back this week to do that on that project. Design phase projects, real quick, Centennial Park is getting through the design development phase. Our next milestone review will be issued this month, and then we review that with staff in December. The thing notable about this one is we'll also send that review set to a third party to specialize, that specializes in estimating construction costs based on plans. And we've done that with all of our bigger building projects, so that is coming up. And I mentioned before that we did some geothermal testing for Centennial Park. Those results in that testing was really favorable. The soils and the conductivity was good, so basically, we can put it right where we wanted to essentially, and put it on the site and not have to move it somewhere else. And that's it. Unless there's any questions?
Any questions for Joe Sayah? Thank you, sir. Ryan, or Seaman's report?
Okay, good evening. I think I mentioned to most of you, I think all of you, that we were having some work done on Well Eight, which is right across from Quail Creek Park. We're getting closer to that work being completed. Last week, we had to do a fairly tedious cleaning process that stirred up some noise later into the evening, close to 10 o'clock. At least, on one night, anyway. I think the other night, we were done a little bit earlier, but that's, that piece is over with. It should be much quieter around there now. We're actually hoping to put the pipe back into the well tomorrow. With any luck, we'll be operational by the end of the week over there on Well Eight. We closed on the Casey's Building earlier this month, and we've got the necessary testing done for asbestos, so we're hoping at least what we're talking about with the contractor now is that should be down before the end of the month. So we'll keep, keep you, keep your eyes open, and you'll see that building come down piece by piece. Unfortunately, it's not one where we can just, you know, drive a truck through it or something. It's going to need to be taken down, I know. Piece by piece. The company we are using, however, has deconstructed, I think, four other Casey's, so they're familiar with.
Interesting.
Yeah, how this works. Regarding the next stage project, we were able to announce today at a luncheon that the Watts family has contributed $250,000 to the project, so very excited about that and very appreciative to the Watts family for their contribution. It'll be the Watts family play yard. So to date, we have raised privately $635,000. And the interesting statistic here is that we've had about 200 donors involved when you, when you include our grassroots efforts like the Barbie movie and the murder mystery on, at Centennial, or at Rancho Way, or, excuse me, Rancho House. So I think we've got some excitement and momentum there. The last thing I would note is that at the end of the month, the mayor and I, along with Nick and Jillian, will be going down to Riverside Casino for an event.
Wait for the.
Yeah, not, not for entertainment. But they have, we applied for a grant through them, and they have made us aware that we will receive a grant, although they don't tell you the amount. So you sit in the audience and wait, I guess. I've never been to one of these. So we're pretty excited about, about that, and hopefully we'll have some good news to share right at the end of the month. And then the last note I have here is just regarding our 110th birthday celebration. Last Friday evening, the Community Relations Department hosted some cake and ice cream and tours of the new city hall, as well as the police station. And turnout was really impressive. I think, Nick, I asked him today how many he thought we had. We didn't have a click or anything, but he estimates 250 people through there. It was nonstop busy from, several of us got there right at four and were given tours right away. It was busy until, I think I didn't get out of there until close to 6:30, so it was a, it was a fun event. That's what I have tonight, Mayor.
Thanks, Ryan.
I'll just pick up on that. I wanted to thank Nick, Jillian, Communications, all of staff that gave those tours that night. How many of you were there that were doing them? Eight, twelve of you?
Well, no, there, I think there was five on the City Hall side and three on PD.
You made it look like there were more than you doing that, so I appreciate your efforts on that. Today, we had the North Liberty Thanksgiving, and I bring this up because it is something Ryan and staff, along with Tom Selick, started, I don't know how many years ago this was, but we've been missing it since COVID. So it was really great to have that event back today. And for everyone here that was in attendance for that, you can, you can vouch for that. And was it 135-ish people that were there? It was a terrific event, and thanks for putting that together, Ryan, and everybody here at city staff for doing that. Wanted to quickly congratulate Brent for his reelection, and also to be welcoming Brian and Paul here at the first of the year. And I made a point too, and was fortunate enough to have lunch with Dr. Seymour from Clear Creek and Manas School District's superintendent over there a couple of weeks ago. And I mentioned, we've talked about the social servicing, social service applications that come up every year. Brian, you always bring this up, and how we don't have any representation from CCA on that. So he, he assured me there would be some interest from, from North Bend specifically for, for that. So the other item that I have is a proclamation for Native American Heritage Month, and I was just behind in the agendas. Give me a moment to pull that up, since Tracy didn't print one up for us.
Yelled.
Could do this faster, I suppose. There we go. Okay. Whereas the City of North Liberty Iowa recognizes that the native and indigenous peoples of the lands that would later become known as the Americas have occupied these lands since time immemorial, and whereas the city recognizes the fact that North Liberty is built upon the homelands and hunting grounds of the native and indigenous peoples of this region, and whereas the city is dedicated to opposing systemic racism towards native and indigenous peoples which perpetuates high rates of poverty and income inequality, exacerbating disproportionate health, education, and social crises, and whereas National Native American Heritage Month serves as an opportunity to celebrate the thriving cultures and values of the native and indigenous peoples of this region, and whereas during this month, we honor the resilience, strength, and vibrant cultures of native and indigenous peoples, and whereas it is important to promote understanding, awareness, and appreciation of native and indigenous peoples' heritage among all citizens, fostering a spirit of inclusivity, respect, and unity. Now therefore, we, the City of North Liberty, do hereby proclaim the month of November as Native American Heritage Month in the City of North Liberty, and would urge all residents to learn about the history and diverse cultures of Native Americans and indigenous peoples, and to participate in events and activities that honor their contributions to our community and nation.
We don't have anything, Quanda, but I would love to say thank you for being here tonight.
That piece of paper like it's the proclamation, and sure, I can take a picture.
I'll have to stand on the red dot. How's that sound?
Okay, sounds good.
This is the spot. Who's taking the picture?
Quanda, do you, do you have a phone that I can take a picture for you?
Oh. I don't take pictures.
Yeah, if that's okay.
Please do.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Hoffman, and esteemed city council members. I commend you for approving the proclamation for Native American Heritage Month and acknowledging the importance of recognizing and honoring the native voices and communities in North Liberty. The statement reflects a thoughtful and inclusive approach expressing a genuine commitment to fostering a sense of unity and respect among all residents. The acknowledgement of the historical caretakers of this land, such as the Kickapoo, the Iowa, the Sauk, the Mizzwaki, and Ochedi-Sakowan nations, is a commendable step towards recognizing the deep connection between the community and the indigenous people who have shaped this area over the centuries. The emphasis on offering respect, dignity, and support to indigenous tribes is a crucial message that underscores the city's commitment to preserving and respecting native history as an integral part of the broader community's history. Encouraging community members to learn about Native American history and cultures actively demonstrates a genuine interest in fostering, understanding, and appreciation. I mentioned that the Native Land Information System website at nativeland.info provides a practical resource for individuals to engage with land and learn more about the land that they inhabit, promoting a sense of responsibility and awareness. The proclamation balances celebration and education, recognizing the significance of native people, culture, and history in North Liberty. Doing so contributes to building a more inclusive and informed community. However, it is vital to remain open to feedback and ongoing collaboration with native communities to ensure that the city's initiatives are respectful and aligned with their needs and perspectives. We must intentionally work to achieve that goal. Thank you for your time and attention to this meaningful celebration of Native American heritage in North Liberty. I look forward to witnessing the positive impact of these efforts on fostering unity and understanding within the community. And for the record, my name's Quanda Hood, and I'm here on behalf of anti-racism and social justice in North Liberty. Thank you.
Thank you, Quanda. Real quick, before you go, can you remind us of that website? I heard about this at the first of the month, and hearing it from you again, and I found, kept going to the wrong website.
Okay, it is, let me find it here, the Native Land Information System, and the website is nativeland.info. So if you put in your address, it'll zoom into where you live and show you the native tribes that are original to this area, and it'll do that all over the world. Thank you.
Thanks, Quanda.
Thank you.
Item nine are council reports. Let us know about things that you've been up to in the weeks since we last met.
I was able to also attend the tours, and it was very busy and some exciting, young, old people, and older people that were able to come in and take tours. So that was exciting, and I think the cupcakes was a bonus. I didn't get any ice cream, but I did get a cupcake. And I also was able to attend the Neighborhood Ambassador's Youth and Childcare Agency. Like, it was like a speed dating, but I was able to go as a council member as well as represent Neighborhood Centers of Johnson County and provide information regarding just youth programs and just services that definitely benefit North Liberty residents and Johnson County residents. And congratulations to Brent. I also had the opportunity to celebrate with him and the other two, Paul and Brian, during the election night, so congratulations.
Thank you. I appreciate your support very much.
That's all I got.
All right.
Mayor, oh, you got, nope. So I was able to meet with Senator Walls. He also had an invitation out to Brian and Paul prior to the election, and they did, they did come to the meeting. And we, most, most of the time was spent talking about affordable housing, and specifically, the golf view and the manufactured housing issue that we've seen here in town. So appreciative of the senator's time, also appreciate his attendance today. Saw him at our event, so appreciate that. He did have questions about Next Stage, and I've let Ryan know that he's interested in helping any way he can with the state side, with the grant side. I attended the Coffee with Coffee Connections at North Liberty Pantry. That was also very well attended. Eric Sittig was there, the two then candidates, Brian Leibold and Paul Park, were also there. Lot of, lot of good discussion and information from the pantry on their plans moving forward for the next couple of years. Very exciting, the expansion that they're looking at. But more so, the numbers that they shared and the increased number of families that they are serving. So I think some eyes were opened in that, so we appreciate them doing that. Then, being at today's fundraiser for the pantry at South Slope, as you talked about, thank you to Jillian for her presentation on Next Stage. She worked hard on that. Thanks to Ryan, of course, for your remarks and all of your work there. Most of all, thank you to Ellie Hire for her speech today. It was very heartfelt and moving, and I saw a number of us taking drinks of water as she was giving her speech to hold the tears in her eyes. So she did a phenomenal job, and I appreciate Ellie, a senior at Liberty High School, for coming in and speaking at the event. And then finally, thank you, of course, to Ashley, to Rakesha, to everyone for their support, and most notably, the voters of North Liberty for putting their trust in me for another four years. I look forward to continuing to serve at a high level to our citizens, so. Thank you, Mayor.
Not to be redundant, but I definitely have to say something about the election. I, I've never been prouder of our town, the way that we've been able to find people that are dedicated, passionate, like Brent and Paul and Brian, and I know Mike was, was able to put up a good fight. And there was just a lot of grace and decorum that happens at our, in our city, and that's not something that you find in other cities, and I really appreciate that. So thank you to all those at Ran and all of our constituents that continue to have dialogue, you know, in a very productive manner. I also attended the birthday celebration, and I was really excited to see the diverse crowd. There were definitely people representing all different demographics, from my seven-year-old to, you know, there were grandparents there, and that was really fun to see. I know that, I don't know if the police station was part of the agenda, but we got to take a tour of that. And then Better Together, just want to put a plug. Their year-end event is tomorrow. If you want more information, I know that the information on that event is available online. And then finally, I don't, I don't remember my notebook, was, I had one more last thing, and I can't recall where I put it down, but yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you all. Item 10 is FY25 Annual Appropriations, and item A is Resolution Number 2023-126. And this is a resolution obligating funds from the Urban Renewal Tax Revenue Fund for appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment financed obligations, which shall come due in the next succeeding final fiscal year, excuse me. And this is for Diamond Dreams. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do you guys have any questions about this? All right. Tracy, could I have a roll call, please?
Bermal?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item B is Resolution Number 2023-127, and this is also a resolution obligating funds from the Urban Renewal Tax Revenue Fund for appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment financed obligations, which shall come due in the next succeeding fiscal year. And this is for Spodix. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Questions on this one? Tracy, could I have a roll call, please?
Wason?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 11 is the FY25 Urban Renewal Draw, and item A is Discussion and Possible Action on the Annual Urban Renewal Funds Request for FY25. Ryan, Grant, could you tell us how you want us to proceed with this here?
Yeah, we just, we just need a motion in a second, and then a voice vote is fine. We are, in this particular case, we're required to submit our TIF debt and future rebates to the county in preparation for FY25 budget. So they're usually due, they are due by December 1st, I believe, so we're a little bit ahead of schedule, but we're trying to get things in order as we prep for that upcoming budget process.
All right, thank you. Could I have a motion for doing just what Ryan described?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, and are there any questions about this? And if it's okay, I'm going to just take a roll call on this one. Tracy, is that all right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I anticipated that.
Oh, look at you.
Wason?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Thank you. Item 12 is Streets and Maintenance Facility Remodel Project, and item A is Public Hearing Regarding Proposed Plans, Specifications, and Estimate of Costs. Is there anyone in the public wishing to make comment on this? Seeing none, I will close public hearing. Item B is Resolution Number 2023-128, and this is a resolution finally approving and confirming plans, specifications, and estimate of cost for the Streets and Maintenance Facility remodel project. Could I have a motion for consideration?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Do you guys have any questions about that? Nice to see those plans in that packet.
Just, was there something we added on, or?
No, this is all internal, basically turning a bay into some office.
I mean, the cost was a little different.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I mean, was it, would you add more things, or it just, how things cost?
It's, as we went through design, this estimate kept going up a little bit based on that.
Is that gonna, is that a case study for FY25 projects that we've looked at that we anticipate rises in cost that way?
You know, it's a conversation we've had because we, you know, I think Shive has done a really nice job with, for example, the Centennial Park project because they put in a bunch of contingencies early on in there. And so hopefully, and what has been held true as we've gotten through some design, we've seen some costs go up, but then you can take it out of the contingencies. With this smaller of a project, we just didn't have as much of a contingency built in. But yes, I think any time is, and hopefully, hopefully their numbers are high, and we get little bids, but, you know. We'll see.
Anything else? Do we do motion of consideration already on this one? I didn't make a note on.
We have a motion in second.
Okay, thank you. Could I have a roll call, then, please?
Absolutely. Bermal?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 13 is a Centennial Park Phase One, and this is Resolution Number 2023-129, a resolution approving the amendment to the Professional Services Agreement between the City of North Liberty and Shive Hattery Inc. for the Centennial Park Next Stage Phase One project. Could I have a motion for consideration?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Do you guys have any questions about this one? All right. Tracy, roll call, please.
Smith?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 14 is Urban Renewal Loan Agreement, and this is Resolution Number 2023-130, a resolution setting the date for a public hearing on proposal to enter into an urban renewal loan agreement and to borrow money to their under in a principal amount not to exceed $6 million. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions on this one? Tracy, roll call, please.
Wason?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 15 is UIHC Fire Service Agreement, and this is Resolution Number 2023-131, a resolution approving the fire service agreement between UIHC for Evergreen Road Campus between the City of North Liberty and the University of Iowa Board of Regents that establishes the terms and conditions under which fire protection will be provided. Could I have a motion for consideration?
So moved.
Second.
Been seconded. Do you guys have any questions about that, and can you repeat the formula? Just kidding. Any questions?
My question is, this is the, this is the base agreement. Does this exclude or include false alarm type fees that may come down the road? So if there's a false alarm and the city typical?
No, this doesn't include any, any other ad hoc costs that might be assessed to any property owner by, for any, any specific extra. This is just an acknowledgement by the Board of Regents that they don't pay property taxes, and we don't let their hospital burn down, generally speaking, right? So this is a way to help offset some of that disparity, but that there, but no, to answer your question, any additional costs that we would normally assess on an ad hoc basis would still be assessed normally there.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Good question. Any other questions? Tracy, roll call, please.
Smith?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 16, this seems familiar, Steiner Way Street Naming. Resolution Number 2023-132 is a resolution authorizing and approving the renaming of the private street in Steiner Medical Park subdivision in the City of North Liberty, Johnson County, Iowa, to Steiner Way. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Do you guys have any questions on this? Tracy, roll call, please.
Wason?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 17 is Solomon's Landing Part One, and this is Resolution Number 2023-133, a resolution accepting public improvements for Solomon's Landing Part One in North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions on this? Tracy, roll call, please.
Bermal?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 18 is our franchise fee ordinance, and item A is the public hearing regarding proposed increase to franchise fees. I'll open the public hearing for this item. Seeing no one in the public, I'll close public hearing. And item B then is First Consideration of Ordinance Number 2023-27, an ordinance amending the Mid-American Energy Company, Interstate Power and Light Company, and Lynn County Rural Electric Cooperative franchise agreements to adjust franchise fees. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Do you guys have any questions or any comments on this item? We did have, we did have a couple of emails over the, the weekend about this, but no one here in the public today.
I just appreciate them writing in. I thought that was actually pretty cool that people actually looked at that and, hey, I don't like that, but just to make sure that, you know, that franchise fee, you know, that there was some thought that, oh, this is all going to Centennial Park. There's a lot of other park projects that need to be funded.
Great point.
And Mayor, I would just say, you know, fresh off the, the campaign trail here, if, yeah, trail, we have lots of trails in North Liberty, so campaign, campaign trails. The, the thing I, I heard most about compliments and why people moved here, why people stay here, is the quality of life and the quality of life things are exactly what this is going to. It's parks, it's trails, it's green space, it's shared space. And I would just say on the Centennial Park side, and I was unabashed in my support of Centennial Park's Next Stage, is the return on investment. That is a park that is actually going to have a very large return on investment that's going to bring millions of dollars in economic development and people staying and coming to our community, spending time, which in turn is going to bring more people to our community because they're going to come and enjoy it and they're going to want to move here. So those are my comments on, on the rise and, and I'll just end with this. We are still below or on par with similarly sized cities that have the same, so this is not an excessive by any means and I'll end with that.
Thank you. Good points, both of you. Anything else? Tracy, roll call, please.
Harrington?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 19 is Fog Ordinance, Fats, Oils, Grease Ordinance and item A is our Public Hearing Regarding Proposed Amendments to the Fats, Oils, and Grease Requirements. I'll open the public hearing for comments. Seeing no one in the public, I will close the public hearing. Item B then is First Consideration of Ordinance Number 2023-28. An ordinance amending Chapters 95 and 97 of the North Liberty Code of Ordinance is further limiting the discharge of fat, oil, and grease into the sanitary sewer system, codifying maintenance and recording requirements and of fat, oil, and grease recovery systems, and establishing permitting requirements and penalties for non-compliance. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Does anyone have any comments, questions on this?
Those were quite informational emails from the wastewater treatment plant folks, so.
Yes, and I was going to say, I very much appreciate Drew's zeroing in on the problem and the numbers and keeping, helping, helping us to understand that. So again, I appreciate the question from the public and the answer from, from Drew and from staff. Anything else? Tracy, could I have a roll call, please?
Bermal?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 20 is our Stormwater Fees Ordinance and item A is Public Hearing Regarding Amendments to the Way Stormwater Fees Are Calculated and Charged. I'll open our public hearing. Seeing no one in the public, I will close the public hearing. Item B is First Consideration of Ordinance Number 2023-29. An ordinance amending Chapter 100 of the North Liberty Code of Ordinance is establishing an equitable fee structure for stormwater utility services. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do you guys have any questions on this?
Ryan, I, this kind of, this kind of puts you on the spot. I, I do not mean to do this. This could, this could be a question I could have asked before, but I think, I think what might help those that are hesitant with this would be to know some of the expenditures that we would look to make out of the fund and what the funds will be going towards, what our plans are in the future.
Fair comment and one of the things I shared with an emailer was our capital improvements plan that specifically identified the, the capital projects, at least in the next five years, as well as, as the budget. We, just from a sharing information standpoint, if you don't mind.
Please do.
Carry on a bit. We, I think you all saw the post that, or at least the text from the post that we made today and then that email went out to, to all those who are, you know, who, who get our email. And then we are planning to send some direct mailings to the larger users, in this case, those that have over 100,000 square foot of impervious service, surface, which is about 30 folks, or 30 businesses in our system. And then we also reached out to Greater Iowa City, to the folks there to make them aware of it, so if they have any business contact or asking them questions, that they can, at a minimum, share some information, but hopefully direct them back to us so we can share. So I will talk to, to Nick. I don't know that he put a link to our, to our CIP on that website, but we could certainly easily do that.
And also to jump on there, you did respond, I think, in a, in an email. What was the dollar amount of projects we had in the next five years?
Just over a million dollars.
A million dollars. Thank you.
And that's on top of our annual operating budget, which I'll find in just a second if, if you'd like here.
So I would reiterate the, there was a lot of work put into this. I know Russ, Ryan Rusnick has put a lot into this. It got pushed back because of all the work and research that needed to be done. This wasn't just a, well, I think we might, should have, it's not that at all. It was very detailed and I can say that with confidence, knowing just some of the work that was put into that, the calculations that were done, the replies that were just most recent from our last meeting on my request for the top 10 to see what those would look like. So this, this has been a well-thought-out thing, so just state that as well.
Did it buy you enough time?
It did, thank you. Operations is about 235,000 a year and then you figure in, you know, another 200 plus in, in capital projects if we were to move forward with those capital projects in the CIP. In, because this fund doesn't have a lot of revenue or enough revenue for the projects, what we've done in the past is either had to borrow for projects you might remember like Muddy Creek Restoration Project or just delay the project. So there are a couple, there are a couple I know in there that we've kind of kicked down the road that Michael and, and Mike Wolf would, would like to keep moving on.
And many of those are environmental, are water quality-based.
Yes, and also flood, flooding related to when we have a heavy rain or a wet season.
Anything else?
I think, just as my correct, even with the increase, we are still way lower than anybody else.
You are. It's, we, you know, this is something that, as Counselor Smith mentioned, it took us a while to, to get the data to you, but from a best practices standpoint, we're well behind the times. There's a, a few years ago, some of you may not have even been on the council, I shared a study from Western Kentucky that talked about building across the country for stormwater practices and even then, our, our practice of a, a one flat fee is, is out of date. Just out, it's just not a best practice. And then when you look at our, our rates that we have set up, and there, there was a spreadsheet in your packet, we're still lower than our neighbors in terms of stormwater rates. And if there are any specific questions that, happy to try, you know, if you see something on that spreadsheet that you're questioning, you said, there were some, one of the most intriguing points, and I, and I appreciate Russ's effort here. He, between he and Clint, they called these cities to ask, what is the highest monthly bill you send out? And I don't know if you saw that line on there, but there's some, there was bills in the thousands of dollars per month that there, people are getting charged, or businesses are getting charged.
Mayor, I would just ask if there's, if there's feedback from businesses as we get started, as you're sending the letters, I would like council to be able to see that.
Absolutely.
Ashley, you had a question?
Yeah, just confirm that aside from the direct mail, what other communication are we having with the largest users? Are we reaching out to them by phone as well and email or just direct mail?
We, we are, at this point, just doing a direct mailing because we're hoping to get pretty specific in the letter that will say, here's the size of your, the amount of impervious pavement you have, here's how it would look on a, on a monthly bill moving forward. And then, of course, they'll have an opportunity, we'll provide phone numbers and emails in there so that they can give us a call if there's questions.
Anything else? All right. Tracy, could I have a roll call, please?
Smith?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for your time and efforts on these. Item 21 is Old Business. Is there anything to review? 22 is New Business. And I'll just, I'm probably going to say it a couple times here before the year is out, but I really appreciate all of you at the DIAS here for the work that you're doing, the communication that you do with our city behind the scenes. Russ, Brett was giving you all the kudos for the GIS work, but I know it's Clint out there doing that.
Somebody has to take the glory.
Yeah. You are all the glory takers up here, that's for sure, but please pass our, our, our thanks to your staff for those. Anything else?
Mayor, I'd say, I, I'm actually kind of proud of this. I'm going to brag a little bit. If you are, if you go to Field Day or have the chance to get to Field Day before the end of the month, play some duck pin bowling, because if you bowl a turkey, like I did, three strikes in a row, they will donate a turkey to the food pantry with your name on it. Now, hopefully they don't write in a marker on the turkey, that'd be kind of embarrassing,